Mr. Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair, roll call. Provincial Vice Governor Clyde Dikinu.
Here.
Board Member Mario Junior B. Albarisi. Board Member Godofredo I. Balansag. Board Member Minirbasi Katinabi. Board Member Bobby J. B. Dinlayan. Board Member Marlon Brando B. Dinlayan. Board Member Armando Junior S. Evangelista. Board Member Jose Miguel S. Portich. Board Member Oliver Owen L. Garcia, absent. Board Member Riel Luastlinas. Board Member RB Eliaces. Absent. Board Member Holy Simon Santo. Board Member Alicia Rish Unahom. Board Member Joseph D. Palmada. Board Member Renalfo Jose Junior G. Pipito. Absent. Mr. Chair, there are twelve out of fifteen members of this august body, there is a quorum.
There being a quorum, the seventh regular session of the twenty-eight SP is hereby in order. Majority Floor Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Proceeding now to the approval of the calendar of business, Mr. Chairman. This also includes the approval of the minutes of our, the min, the approval of the minutes for previous regular session, Mr. Chairman. And for now, Honorable Presiding Officer, for the first reading, we have seventeen items. For the second readings, twenty-four items. We have only one item under the question hour, Mr. Chairman, and five items under unfinished business. And we have eight items under the other communication. In our addendum one, Mr. Chairman, for the first reading, we have two items. For the second reading, we have only one item. So moving for the approval of the calendar of business as presented, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, as to the minutes of the si- sixth regular session of the twenty-eighth Sangguniang Panaluwigan at the SP Session Hall on August five, twenty-twenty-five, Malay Balay City, Camp Ipinis has been disseminated in advance, Mr. Chairman. Thus, I move to dispense the full reading of the minutes of our previous regular session.
Objection, comments? There being none, reading of the previous minutes is hereby dispensed with.
And Honorable Presiding Officer, I move further for the approval of the minutes of our sixth regular session, Mr. Chair.
Objection, comments? There being none, the minutes of the sixth regular session of the twenty-eight SP is hereby approved.
Honorable Presiding Officer, proceeding to the first reading, reference to the business. May we now recognize our secretary, Attorney Apolo Maguale, to read the first item during, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed, Attorney Maguale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. First reading, reference of business, item number one. Proposed Resolution Number Zero Two Five Dash Twenty Twenty-Five of the Twenty-Eighth SP, authored by Board Member Armando Junior S. Evangelista, PCL Bukinon Federation President. This province entitled "A Resolution Extending Warmest Congratulations to Mr. Jan Ray B. Gara", real estate broker, a real estate agent for placing top eight with a rating of eighty-eight percent in the recently concluded real estate appraiser licensure examination last July twenty-twenty-five, thereby bringing honor and pride to the province of Bukinon.
Thank you, Mrs. Secretary, Mr. Chairman. I move for the approval of the following, Mr. Chair. Item number one and two, this will be transferred to the new business for the day. And this will be marked as item number twenty-five and twenty-six. For items number three, four, or five, this will refer to the Committee on Appropriation, Rules and Privileges. Item six and seven, Mr. Chairman, they refer to the Committee of Social Service, Rules and Privileges. For item number eight, this will refer to the Committee on Education and on Rules and Privileges. Item number nine, this will refer to the Committee on Health and on Rules and Privileges. Item number ten, this will refer to the Committee on Land use, human settlement, Agrar and Reform on Rules and Privileges. And item number eleven, this will be referred to the Committee on Laws, Justice, and Human Rights and on Rules and Privileges. From items number twelve to seventeen, Mr. Chairman, this will be transferred to the new business for the day. And this will be marked as items number twenty-seven to thirty-two. In our addendum one, Mr. Chairman, items number eighteen to twenty, this will be transferred to the new business for the day. And this will be marked as item number thirty-four to thirty-six. So moving for the approval as enumerated, Mr. Chairman.
Objection, comments? There being none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. May we now proceed to our question hour, Mr. Chairman. We have only one item in the question hour, Mr. Chair. Thus, I move to suspend our internal house rule to accommodate our invited guest, Mr. Chairman, the Commander of the Fourth Infantry Diamond Division, Camp Ipinis Bangilista Patagagandoro City, to shed light on the members of the twenty-eighth Sangguniang Panaluwigan relative to the presence of the army personnel and several army trucks parked along the national road at the Barangay Duminorog in Talakag, Bukinon, Mr. Chair, last July twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five. Thus, I move to suspend our internal house rule, Mr. Chair, to accommodate our invited guest, Major General Michel B. Anar, Mr. Chair, the Commander, Fourth Infantry Diamond Division of the Camp Ipinis Bangilista Patagagandoro City.
In a second, house rules are suspended.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. May we now recognize our invited guest or any representative coming from the um, Fourth Infantry Division of Camp Ipinis Bangilista Patagagandoro City, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, good sir, please state your name and the position you hold in the organization for record purposes.
Good afternoon, the honor, honorable members of the Sangguniang Panaluwigan, Province of Bukinon. I'm Colonel Warren Munda, Philippine Army, the Deputy Brigade Commander of the Four-O-Third Infantry Brigade, based in Camp Usitawayan, Malay Balay City. I'm representing our Brigade Commander, Brigadier General Siegfried Columbus Tubalado. Uh, this is to inform to the honorable member of the twenty-eighth Sangguniang Panaluwigan that the Philippine Army is conducting this battalion evaluation, uh, uh, training program. So this, uh, program is, uh, conducted at the first training group, Tracom Philippine Army, in Kalilangan, Bukinon. The program is for the infantry battalions of here, based in Mindanao, from the Fourth ID, Ten ID, First ID, and Sixth ID. So this is a two weeks program that all battalions of, uh, different divisions will proceed to the first training group in Kalilangan for the two weeks program. So that's why, uh, to the honorable members, you can observe the convoys of vehicles, civilian or mark vehicles there. So, but we ensure to the populace in Talakag or in the, uh, main roads that, uh, we will observe the proper, uh, traffic or discipline when it comes to the convoy procedure, uh, your honor. So there's no, there's nothing to worry about with regards to any fear of whatever situation arising in Bukinon. Uh, just would like to assure to the honorable body that our province is generally peaceful. We are experiencing this, uh, frankility, peace, and there's no other, uh, threat to our development or economic development in the area, except that we are confronting this long time, uh, enemy of the state, the New Peoples Army. Then everything is controllable as of this, uh, this date, at this moment. That's all, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, before I'll proceed with my, uh, query, you know, I would like to acknowledge our IPM representative, Honorable Board Member Attorney RB Eliases.
Welcome, Honorable Eliases. Mr. Secretary, please take thought.
Noted, Mr. Chair.
Um, sir, uh, good afternoon. Sir, Colonel Warren, no, Munda, sir, um, uh, you are now the, uh, kining officer in charge of the Four-O-Third Infantry Brigade, no, in Impalambong, Malay Balay City. Sir, uh, I am thinking na moraob, mutransfer na daw ang Camp Ipinilista into the military reservation, which was actually reserved, no, in the province of Bukinon, and this is in the municipality of Talakad. Um, I think, munato siguro, sir, nga kunagian, daghan kinagapark. Then including also of the presence of the, uh, engineering brigade, that they are, they are also, uh, having these dump trucks, uh, kargado, kasabot ba ka, bi sayang, sir?
Yes, yes.
Ah, thank you. Kargado ug mga bala, sir, nga patulung dito sa kining municipality of Talakad. And in fact, na sila between sa kining, uh, I think that was sa Duminorog proper, diba na may detachment? Then after sa katubitang area ni, um, former SB member, dormitory, muraob si manukan, diba na may isa ka detachment? Then I've noticed na daghan kinagapark ng mga kining, uh, six by, o gatong mga personnel ninyo ng mga vehicle. So, nakainon ko nga basig munani ang patatransfer sa Camp Ipinilista into the military reservation, which was really intended, uh, for the Philippine Army in that area. And it was also reserved, I think, during long, long time ago, already. So kay, I have heard also that, um, certain land developer, gamito na daw puno nila ang ilang portion dito sa Camp Ipinilista. And dilig, unopago, ang facility sa Infantry Division, Fourth, I think Fourth ID, Infantry Division, which was also, uh, transfer i- in, in, in somewhere in airport, no, in Lagindingan? Was it true, sir? Tinood ba na?
Uh, yep. Uh, your honor, uh, may I say that that's all, uh, tawag na tong rumors. So wala pa tay, wala pa tay basis, ano, uh, your honor. Katong July twenty-eighth, this is the time the contingent of the Tenth Infantry Battalion from the First ID, katong na time, uh, nagkuwan sila sa, paingon sila sa, uh, first training group. Ang atong first training group sa Kalilangan, uh, within the, situated in the military reservation, I intended for the training of our individual or, uh, u- units, uh, here in Mindanao. So, uh, ang, ang ikwang karoon sa, trust karoon sa army is to develop that, uh, particular reservation na solely for training ground. Then when it comes to the issue on the
Transfer, transfer.
Transfer of Fourth ID, so
Wala pa.
Wala pa tay basis, ano, kay, it goes to the process, uh, your honor.
Ah, okay.
That because, uh, it will go through the, uh, BCDA that will dictate when and where the Fourth Infantry Division will be transferred. So may mga sabi na hersey, even the Kagen Dioro, uh, LGU is operating a lot in, somewhere in Danculion. And the province of Isamis Oriental is operating also somewhere in, uh, Lagindingan. And we have also this, uh, proposed site in Agusan del Norte. So, wala pa tay, wala pa gi, uh, definite time and when, uh, transfer. And it's all the hersey, uh, your honor.
So at least, uh, nadungan namo, sir, kung sa gitinood, ano, eh, dilig lang dito kay, kining transfer. Premature pa dito, information. So thank you for that, sir, no? But anyway, this two weeks nga program ninyo, sir, for training of different divisions here, conducted in, in, in Bukinon, sir, uh, munisang sa part, sa part of Kalilangan and Talakag.
Yes, sir, honor.
Yeah, because Kibaritan is part of the municipality of Kalilangan. And Duminorog in Tikalaan is part of Talakag, sir, diba?
Yes, sir, honor.
So, nakanang imonggi mention, sir, ng military reservation. May we, no, kung pilag ini ang intended for that area, no, uh, sir, is there any certain, uh, specific number of, or definite, na kining area intended for the Philippine Army in that, uh, specific municipalities in Kalilangan and Talakag, sir?
Uh, your, your honor, per trust of the army is the whole of the military reservation is intended to different, uh, kind of training. So may na may training nga pang unit, pang battalions, or, uh, larger force, na kuipang individual. So ang kuangidano is para na sa, so, exclusive for the training of, uh, army personnel. Uh, I, I think may idea mo recently that we have this joint training with the Australian Armed Forces. So na diha na to gi, gi held sa military reservation na, na ay mga engineering activities, may mga, uh, different explosive, na na kind of training, your honor, na, uh, kinanglagayd ang tibok reservation sa, in that area, I need for that, uh, particular purpose.
But this is only last for two weeks, sir, kining a program?
Uh, yes, honor, but then I'd like to inform the body that it will last until December. Kay, tanan nga mga battalions based in Mindanao will train at, uh, the first training group. Tanan siya, your honor, na, uh, mahuman ang, for example, today mahuman ang isa ka battalion, tomorrow or the next day, maabot na but another convoy of
Ah, okay.
The next, through, uh, ano, contingent.
Series of training, dini, until December, eh, sir?
Yes.
So katong, katong previous mga weeks, first batch na dito sila?
Yes.
First batch? Nagikipit, tinagahanag yun, habi na ko, mantransfer na sila, sir ba? But anyway, um, this is just surprise us, no? Regarding on the situation, sir, we do understand because of the presence of the Philippine Army in the provincial, um, jurisdiction of Bukinon, sir. I think, uh, probidyo nalisi na gamay, no, ang ato ang mga, um, paghitabo. And in fact, gani, um, I think that was last week, sir? Last week, no? Na 'yung mga paghitabo nga ni, ni, ni abot dito sa munis, I think that was, the right, the, ano, was conducted in the municipality of Kason. That there was really a presence of atong mga, atong, I'm broke, sir, na to ang mga naspikas na nasa Kason. But that was only comprising of the municipal Kason, sir, during the time?
Part of Kason only, your honor.
Wala is San Fernando, ato, and Kitautao?
Wala. Wala, your honor.
Tagi, nakuyawan po dyan, sir, kina, kui, after ato, sir, napuby series ato, ni tabo po nagread nila, the presence of ato, gyan pong mga amigo, po lahi, nasa to sila, sir, lahi sila, wala, base, hindi, magindan daw, I think? Ang, na, 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 katung, mi kuyaw, sir. Katung, mi kuyaw. So I think, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield to my colleague, Mr. Sir, if there are some query?
Any queries from the members regarding this, uh? Yes, Honorable, uh, Marlon Dinlayan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you, sir, kay, nalinawan me nga, ang iyong main purpose, main reason, dito sa Dumin, Duminurog, katong nag, uh, park last July twenty-eighth, karong tuig. The main reason is ang training, uh, exercise program, sir. Okay, so until December, taman sa December. So my question, sir. So, unaman is along the national road, uh, unsa ang, ang safety nga mga precautions? I mean, ang dilig ba siya makabara sa mga, sa dalan, mga kini atong mga, of course, public, private vehicles? Na sikyab, nabi mga safety precaution, sir? Ako lang kaklarohan kay, taman paray December, sir. Thank you.
Yes, your honor, uh, in our, we have this, uh, standard operating procedure in, in convoy, your honor. Uh, proper distances, the time that they should leave from one point, one point to the destination. So we assure that, uh, we observe that is OP to, uh, avoid or lessen, uh, incident along the way. So, muranay among maka, maassure sa inyo, your honor, na then, uh, sa lead convoy, na ginay mga, mga martial or sa other term, na hatak, na magansure na at least ang public aware na may incoming, uh, convoy of mark vehicle or civilian na, na hired by the army in the transport of the troops.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, may I just clarify, Mr. Chairman, because under nineteen eighty-seven, uh, our constitution, Article Three, Section Two, that the, the Armed Forces, you are kamong protector sa atong mga civilians. So in other words, the civilian is supreme over power of the Armed Forces. Kung wala munag, manag subay sa, uh, exact protocol. So my last question, sir, before last July, nga nag, uh, park na atong with the presence of our army personnel and as well as the several army trucks, uh, in Duminurog. Uh, was there, uh, nabay, nabay, na, nanangit ba sa atong, uh, barangay or any local LGU na to? Nabay ahead ang, uh, mo, sulod mo dito, ang, ang, ano? Just clarify, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, honor, uh, part of our procedure, uh, before the conduct of any activity, it should have been coordinated to the local government, barangay or municipality. Yes, sir, honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Salamat.
Thank you. If there are no other questions? Majority Floor?
So thank you. Um, salamat kayo, um, sir Colonel Warren Simunda, sa in mga prosensya. Kay, we, I am thinking, nga murag mutransfer na daw, dilig, eh, sir, it was misinformation, sir. So salamat kayo. At least, uh, na tagaan, tagkalamdagan regarding on the presence also of our Philippine army there in, uh, barangay, uh, Tikalaan, I think, sir, no, Tikalaan and Kibaritan. Uh, Talakag and Kalilangan. So salamat kayo. So with that, Mr. Chair, I think, uh?
Yes, again, no, thank you, Deputy Commander of the Four-O-Third Brigade, Colonel Warren Munda, sir, for, uh, your time and for easing the worries, no? Especially of, uh, uh, Honorable Palmada. And, uh, of course, he is just representing his people, the province of Bukinon. So, uh, nakita niyang, ang murad na ay mga pamutan lang, ang ang matubag. Thank you for answering it clearly and directly. Thank you, uh, Colonel Warren Munda, brother, sir. Thank you.
Yes, your honor.
Disess for one minute, Mr. Chair.
Uh, two minutes, Disess.
Our, uh, session and house rule is still suspended, Mr. Chair?
Uh, session is resumed, but before you proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of my idol, former board member Renalfo Pipito. Welcome, sir. Yes, Majority Floor?
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Mr. Chairman, may, uh, we recognize the gentleman coming from the Second Legislative District, the Honorable Board Member Attorney Holy Simon Santo, regarding for the, in our, uh, addendum one?
Honorable Monsanto is recognized. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. We are taking advantage, Mr. Chair, that the house rule is still suspended. Although this is not, uh, our visitors now, is not among those officially included in the schedule, Mr. Chair. But taking into consideration the urgency of two items under addendum one, we made a call to them, thank you nga, naka-accommodate po sila sa among invitation, urgent invitation, Mr. Chair, so that we could be enlightened as, as these two items under addendum one, Mr. Chair. So, with the permission, Mr. Chair, of this body, may I be allowed to, uh, request the presence of our visitors to answer some queries, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, sir. Who would you like to start with?
Okay, uh, uh, only Engineer Giselle is now already. Uh, okay, and, uh, Sir Damasco of the PDRRMC. May proceed, Mr. Chair, Majority Floor Leader, may proceed.
Please, go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Sir, sa kay, sir, kuwan siguro, no, Sir Damasco. This is in reference to item number eighteen, the first item here, which refers to, this is actually PDC Executive Resolution Number Zero Six Dash Twenty Twenty-Five. Maokinisia ang resolution which amend, Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Twenty Twenty-Five, which approve the utilization of the Ilde RRMF Special Trust Fund amounting to one hundred twenty million. Remember that, sir, no, for the procurement of additional PTV. And then, in this resolution, there is also included in the, in the lower portion of this resolution, aside from the acquisition of additional PTV, there is included here also as part of the amount to be financed, those items which is described only for other disaster-related programs, projects, and activities. We have been questioning them by the very first time we have this. Because it mentions of for others disaster, disaster-related programs. It did not mention with specific, what are those items?
Yeah, that is correct, your honor. The, the last paragraph really states that and for other related activ, activities. Uh, that, that refers to the, actually to the following, aside from the procurement of the PTV, the other related activities which is specified under the second pa, second page of the PDC Resolution, which was presented during the June nineteen, uh, PDC Committee, uh, Committee, Executive Committee Hearing, which are the following, the completion of the storage warehouse in the amount of thirty-four million. The rehabilitation of barangay buildings, uh, which was damaged by fire at barangay Moswagod Kabanglasan in the amount of two million. The construction of foot, foot bridges at barangay Kausayan, Kitauta, Bukinon in the amount of four million. Then the procurement of PTV in the amount of eighty million. That, uh, actually totals in the amount of one hundred twenty million.
Was that item part of the minutes? Can you have the minutes?
Yes, your honor.
Will you please pronounce us the copy of the minutes before we can act on the resolution?
Uh, yeah, the minutes, and we have also the, the resolution of the Council, which also specified all those what, what is included in the PDC.
So, this is included in the amendments? Is that correct? Because we have a, we have a Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Twenty Twenty-Five, which was amended by this resolution?
Yes, yes, your honor.
So, the, the acquisition of the PTV and the other related programs and activity PTV and the other related programs and activities was the amendment of that resolution number zero two dash twenty twenty five?
Yes, that is correct, your honor.
But these items are not included in the annual investment plan?
That is already included during the, during the approval of the executive of the provincial executive committee last June nineteen, it was presented for approval, for the approval of the PDC.
That was already included?
Yes.
Because this item was, there is also a late, ano, in the later portion, and its inclusion to the calendar year twenty twenty five annual investment plan?
Yes.
So why is it included here when it was already included?
And if it is a new budget, because this is part of the trust fund, every time that is, actually that is the the rules and regulation which is provided by the, by the COA, that every, every time there's a new procurement, especially the, the following project which is, which are enumerated there, it should be approved by the PDC to, to be part of the inclusion of the annual investment plan, the EIP.
Yes, oh.
Yeah, for the twenty twenty five.
Yes, ah, kung pangutahan na, ano, sir ba? Ah, nganong kining, kini karoon nga resolution nga inyong paaprobang, gibutang pa man ninyo din nga and its inclusion in the twenty twenty five, kuna include na ni siya? Nganong need pa man nga ibutang din ni, and its inclusion, nga nainclude na man ka ni siya?
If I may, Mr. Chair. Dungan manggon ni siya pagpresent during the PDC execcom, Mr. Chair. Supposedly, dungan ni siya nga mabot din hi sa, din hi sa Sanggoyang Panlalawigan. Pero nauna ang ka-take up ang gatuang EIP, but supposedly during the PDC execcom, dito gi-approve nga iinclude ni siya sa EIP, it's because dili ta makaparelisog, I mean, dili ta makalakot of fund if it's not in the EIP. So medyo naula hilan ni siya pagabot din hi sa Sanggoyang Panlalawigan, actually, but this was taken in the this was presented in the PDC, PDC Executive Committee. And the request there was, the action decide during that presentation was for its inclusion to the EIP. And in that same I think in that, in that same forum, I mean, meeting of the PDC, dito podgi gi-approve ang gatuang annual investment, supplemental annual investment plan?
Supplemental ni siya? The specific magon ni siya? No, and its inclusion to the twenty twenty five annual investment plan? Kay, you know, we cannot, we cannot just amend, or dinan sa biato? We cannot just amend it by a mere resolution? That should be amended through an ordinance also? So muna kung gingon nga, if that was already approved, so dina na to siya ang i-include din hi? We will approve kung naanat, naanat dito sa resolution katong itemize nga mga other related programs, projects or activities ba, naanam ka na siya, part of the attachment ka na siya. Kala raw gada nga atong pwedeng maaprobang, but as far as the inclusion, ano, sa twenty twenty five annual investment, we cannot do that.
Actually, your honor, it's really a new project, which is for the inclusion for the previously which was approved by the, by the August body. I think this is a new, because this is a, this, the source of the fund is coming from the trust fund.
Ah, so dili pa ni siya, pa ni siya mainclude sa atong annual investment plan? So we will just take it, we are not against, we'll just take it one step at a time. No, we will first have a resolution asking for the amendments of the ordinance approving the annual investment, ipansaksan ato ni siya? Then follow the resolution for this one. Pero wala tay teknikaliti, eh, we cannot do that. Same as through sa ika duwa nga item gehapon. Kining reversion ato, nakamention gehapon dito, no, no problem nga. Atos yang i-revert, no, katong mga meals and snacks, atong i-revert siya for the construction in progress na mga gini ni, building another structures, pero nakabutang gehapon dito, and its inclusion gehapon? Three million, yes, technically, we cannot do that, god, no? We cannot amend. May legal mang gehapon na magamender kita sa atong AIP, which is an ordinance, that cannot be? Yes, ordinance, we take it as an ordinance.
The, the second resolution, your honor, this refers to our current budget for the twenty twenty five under the category of disaster preparedness. And we have here meals and snacks in the amount of five million. Considering that we have the, the expenses during the kaambulan, wala siya mahurot on five million. That is why we reverted the
Three million?
The three million. And the three million, this is, this is not the trust fund, this is the current fund. So the three million will be to augment, to augment the the budget for the for the continuing construction of the warehouse. Because the trust fund is thirty-two, thirty-four million. Then the other three million will be included into the thirty, with the total now, it will now become the thirty-seven million because the the, the, the program of the PO is, the second phase is thirty-seven million.
Yes, although this is already a budget na sa ato, pero we will be using the unspent amount to a program which is not included sa atong AIP. So ato gehapon i-amender atong AIP para musulud gehapon siya, otherwise, mga technical, mangyod kita. Technical malversis yun atong dating ang ni dayo. So ato sa i-amender daan ng atong AIP to include these items, then after that, we will have this resolution passed.
Yeah, that is why in our resolution, there is always a provision that we are, that is part of to be inclusion, the, to be part of the twenty twenty five inclusion of the annual investment plan.